Hello, everyone. Happy Monday and welcome to the January 13th Budget Noddy Committee meeting. And I think we can, item number one, we can do a visual roll call that we're here and the meeting is called to order. Item number two is public comment on any non-agenda items. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda? Go ahead, Mr. Gavidia.
I do. Thank you, ma'am, Madam Mayor. I think that's the first time I get to call you Madam Mayor. Just an ask that the committee, Regina, we've already talked about this, that we could get the statements up, camp leave, everything. There are a lot of nasty vicious rumors still floating around out there. I hear it's gone as far as council members from other cities now repeating this nonsense. It's somehow Clayton is going broke and in decline. I see it on social media, people saying that we've quote "blown a hole through the deficit." You know, this kind of stuff is just creating more problems and we, we know it's not true, but it'd be helpful if, you know, the 15 million, give or take, that the city has, that the statements were up on the website. They used to be, and I understand it's an issue trying to get the UBS statements up there and hiding the account numbers, but just something, because that's something that those of us who speak the truth can point to all these folks on social media who keep saying that, oh, my gosh, we have, I think San Ramon has a real deficit, if I'm not mistaken. We have, you know, some fractional number and it's debatable whether or not it's a deficit when that money should have been set aside in general funds to begin with. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. Ms. Shulman?
Hi. Thank you for listening to me and hello, everybody. Happy New Year, if I haven't seen you beforehand. And I would agree with Mr. Gavidia. I have been approached by a city council member and Concord myself and asked about going broke. So I think that that does need to be addressed. And the other issue is, is that I think, although this is not a city council meeting, I believe some city council members have gone off the rails on social media. And I do know with the Institutes of Government and the League of Cal Cities, they recommend that officials do not engage in negative comments about anything with city government on social media. And I know that being Chair of the Planning Commission, when I went through training, we were told emphatically not to engage with any constituent about anything that was going on and to stay off of social media. So I think that needs to be reiterated because we have members of our city officials actually engaging on social media with nasty vile comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shulman. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then we will move on. I will close public comment on non-agenda items, move to item number three, which is, was that number?
Minute.
Oh, three. There it is. Sorry. Discussion of RFPs in the public purchase portal.
No, this is.
No? Oh, what am I looking at?
Your, this is.
Oh, are those the minutes?
This is the minutes that we pulled up.
Oh. Where is our, uh, yeah.
This is the right approval.
Oh, you know what? I'm gonna just look at it on my laptop. Sorry, guys. Yeah. So approval of the minutes from the November 7th, 2024 meeting. Motion?
We have to take public comment.
Oh, public comment, sorry. Public comment on the minutes from November 7th? No public comment? Okay.
I approve.
Motion? I second it.
Okay.
Okay. And item number four is recommend investment management and advisory services vendor. I believe Regina, our Assistant City Manager, will queue this up for us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor, community members. This afternoon, we have with us James Dill. He's a member of UBS and he has presented to the Budget Noddy Committee before regarding the investment portfolio for the City of Clayton, and he is here to come back and give us an update on the presentation and be available for questions. So with that, James, I take it that you're online and you're ready to go. All right, James, are you gonna share your screen and do the presentation? You're currently on mute.
Will we be able to see him?
We're ready to go.
Oh, hey, Stephanie, how are you?
I'm well, yourself? Hi, James, sorry, it sounds like we are just having a microphone difficulty. If you could go ahead and start.
Are we doing this?
Will we be able to see him? And the presentation? Could we also share his presentation ourselves and then be able to hear him?
We just might not be able to see it in the room. I'm trying to get ahold of our support to find out.
May I suggest that we, is, if he's not on now, is he, are we good to go, or?
James is on.
He's on.
He can only hear through our participant laptops.
Oh, I see.
Yep. Can't hear through the room. So I can leave my microphone on.
Well, it'd be, I mean, for the, I think that may be a challenge, just because we can't really see the thing in the room, is, do we, do we expect that we may resolve the issue shortly?
I'm attempting to call him right now.
Maybe we can switch the order?
Yeah, let's do that.
And then if maybe?
We're gonna try to switch the order, James.
We'll come back to him.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I was saying if one of us could share our screen too, we'd be able to at least see his presentation, okay? All right, let's move on. Hang on a second. Now I just lost my screen. Here with me a sec.
Item, you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Sure. Item five is the recommendation to City Council for revised job description. This is gonna be led by Regina as well, so we could jump to that one and then we'll come back.
All right.
And I would, I would say, we've all read, we've both all read the materials, so if you want, I think there was like a deck that you were gonna present.
There was a presentation, yes.
But I don't know if that's available here?
That's what I'm gonna try to share right now.
Okay. If you could, because I think the deck would be helpful, but we've read through everything and we can ask our questions from that.
I think we're gonna have the same problem that I'm not able to post it.
Hmm. Our support.
Yeah. Because I'm sharing it, but.
But we're not connected here.
But we're not connected up here. So I can walk through the slide deck with you? I know that that doesn't help the audience, but we can just kind of walk through it and talk about what we're trying to do here?
Would it make a difference if our city clerk was able to share her screen?
I think we're not able to connect to the screen.
We're not, we're not.
We're not connecting to the whole system.
Oh, the whole system. That's what she's working on.
Okay. So what we're trying to do today is, we're trying to revise two job descriptions, we're trying to add three new job specifications, and we're trying to remove two positions from the current general fund budget and revise the current year salary schedule. For this fiscal year budget, we have positions included for an administrative assistant, an associate planner, a community development director, and a part-time facilities attendant. The administrative assistant job specification is from the early 1990s, so in, for example, something in that job description, it says that the employee shall type a document as opposed to use a computer and a word processor, something more appropriate in this day and We, in the current year budget, we have in the org chart, a management analyst that we have been discussing since the conception of the budget, but it was left unfunded so that the new city manager could come in and build his team to make sure that that's really the position that he needed. Most positions will remain relatively neutral, and if approved, it will move our budget to full-time equivalents of 26.5 employees. We use data gathered from the cities of El Cerrito, Hercules, Lafayette, Martinez, Maraga, Arinda, Pleasant Hole, Penal, and San Pablo. And we confirm that the job duties, when we were trying to sign these job descriptions and the salary ranges, that they were at least 80% similar to the job duties that we are bringing on for the City of Clayton. What we're proposing tonight, this afternoon, is to change the job title from an administrative assistant to administrative clerk, to change the job title from a recreation leader to a community services leader, to add a community development technician job specification, to add a management analyst job specification, and add a senior planner job specification, and remove the community development director and the associate planner. The community services leader would open, monitor, and close rental facilities, set up, take down, and clean rental areas. They would perform routine administrative duties, including phone encounter reception. They would interact with clients and the public, respond to questions for facility rentals, also concerns and complaints from the patrons. They would assist with the execution of special events, including concerts, car shows, parades, et cetera, and they would report issues and needs of the various facilities back to city staff. The senior planner job duties would perform advanced professional work related to a variety of planning assignments. They would manage complex planning studies, development application, and plan reviews. They'd review and approve administrative discretionary and current planning permits. They would review various plans and applications for complex subdivisions, housing, and commercial developments. They would provide professional planning assistance to member communities on varied land use projects. They administer and evaluate city development standards and land use and zoning requirements. They would develop and present reports to the Planning Commission as well as the City Council, evaluate and recommend final revisions to major planning, transportation, and zoning policies, practices, and procedures, and they would work with community members to review and approve for various projects. The community development technician job duties would investigate complaints and conduct field checks on violations of city codes, ordinances, regulations, permits, and resolutions. They would receive and respond to inquiries from the public, contractors, developers, city employees, and other parties. They would post notices and prepare mailings for public hearings on individual properties. They would work closely with the police department with difficult code compliance cases, and when safety is concerned, they'd be responsible for issuing a variety of permits, including temporary use permits, special event and processes, and process park and facility rental applications. They would assist the senior planner with over-the-counter visits from the public. We have done a deep analysis of the finances for these positions, and we have determined that while the first year, this current fiscal year, there would be a budget savings for, because of what was proposed for the 2425 budget and what has been expended to date for the contract expenses, plus the quarter four salaries and benefits, if these positions were to be brought on, that there would be a budget savings of about $28,000. However, moving forward for next fiscal year, there would be a cost to the budget of approximately, I think it was.
Seventy-six.
Is approximately $76,000. And with that, I am available for questions. I am sorry, I can't present all this.
Okay. That's all right.
Vice Mayor, one, do you wanna go first?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you for this. I think the, in the materials, I knew, I think we had talked before that in the materials it would be really helpful, like, because eventually this will come to full council, so. I think it'd be really helpful to present not just the positions that are changing or the ones that are impacted, but like a total scope of all positions. I think you, in your segment, you said it's 26.5.
Recording in progress.
But I think it's 27.6, if I recall. So it'd be, I think it would be helpful to include in the materials, a list of all positions at the status quo, and then what the forecast would be for FY '26. FY '25 is affected by timing, but FY '26 on an annualized basis will be more helpful, because I think that will reflect, as long as you get to that 76 number that you mentioned, because I think in the email, it was a 45 number, so it wasn't, and I think it.
There was some cost savings there for this fiscal year, correct?
Yeah, so on an annualized basis going forward is always how I think it would be most helpful to digest in terms of presentation. So that'd be that. And then I think, I have two overall comments, and I'm trying to just stick to the substantive stuff, so.
There you go. There we are.
Perfect. Okay. For the actual job descriptions that are listed, I would recommend that we have them less lengthy. They're very specific and they talk, I mean, they get down to, I think, pretty granular, and it would be, I think it would be helpful for staff and managing the roles if you were to create the job descriptions on a broader basis from a functional perspective, like activities to include 1, 2, 3, and that's it, and others like this. So then you don't have to go into such detail, and I think it'll be easier to manage on an ongoing basis, because you will likely have a lot of overlap in function, depending on who's available and whatnot, and it gives you more flexibility. So that would just be a recommendation. It doesn't actually change how you do anything, but it, it doesn't box you in as much, which I think the flexibility would be useful. And the last thing that I had for now is, for the community development tech, we have that role, I think, I think the top end is 108, right? And the bottom end is 93 on the salary scale, if I, if I recall off the top of my head. This is a role that was, I mean, from the educational, educational requirements for this, it's a high school diploma, and I think that, plus given the duties and what we had, which staff was performing these duties in the past, and the rate of compensation for that, I think that's probably too high. And especially, yeah, so I think that's too high, given what the duties are. I think, what I would do is, I would peg it more closely to the individual or where the role was prior to them leaving. I think that was at the beginning of the year. And I think that's probably a fair, a fairer representation of market and see what we get at that level, because I think 93 for high school is probably, well, it's really great for that person, but I think it's not as great for us, so. That, that was it.
Thank you. And I had some similar things, and thank you again for answering some of my questions ahead of time. So we did have someone in this role about a year ago. I think he left about a year ago, that was doing code enforcement, facilities rentals, front desk work. Again, I don't know what that person's salary was. I tried looking for it today, couldn't find it, but maybe it's more comparable to that. It's not really replacing the assistant planner, which I think we have in there, right? Because the assistant planner duties are going to the senior planner, and kind of condensing those other positions. I also think it's a little high, and one of the things I did ask our Assistant City Manager is that it looked to me like we were recommending a lot of these positions on the very high end, and you said that we're budgeting, we're proposing on the high end so we don't go over budget, but that many of the positions may actually come in on the lower end of the range. So I just want folks to know that just because we're budgeting for the high end, do you wanna?
Yes, when you budget for the high end, you, that's what you would do. You would budget for the high end, you would offer them, and most positions in government come in at steps one, between steps one and steps three, and then that way you don't go over budget. But if you budget on the high end, then you have that money set aside there so that you're not coming back and asking council in April, May, wait, we've gone over budget on our salaries because we didn't budget appropriately.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't hiring people at the highest end of the range, because then we don't have anywhere to go after that, right? So, and again, of course, it'll be skills-based, education-based, experience-based. And the other question that I had was, so we were talking about someone doing special events before, so will this person, that community tech person, will not be doing any of that? It sounds like a lot of those duties may fall on the community services leader, which is the hourly position? Maybe you can explain how we shifted from community services coordinator.
Right, so.
Or remove that.
We looked at currently what we offer in special events and how we go about doing special events. We use a promoter for our concert series that takes care of that package for us for the, for the most part, and then we have some car shows and the parade. There wasn't enough annually to warrant having a full-time coordinator to coordinate those special events. So the part-time position is there as, think of it more as a support role. So day of, setting up, taking down, cleaning up, delivering equipment, what have you, for anything that we're doing, facilitating the rentals on an ongoing basis. So anything that we would need to offset with assistance for coordination or, you know, programming for special events, we would be looking at the management analyst to assist with some of that stuff, because it isn't strictly a recreation coordinator like we talked about for a year's project. If you were interested in expanding offerings, so there were events every month and we weren't hiring a promoter to do the concert series, we might be having a different conversation, but it just doesn't warrant that position.
And thank you for that explanation, because that was a big change from our last meeting in November. Also, it looks like the org chart has us at 27.6 positions. Is that with all the positions, if they were approved? I thought, I thought it was 28-something last time, so is it 27.6 if we approve everything that staff is proposing today? And I also just wanna add a little footnote here that the budget estimates for this year and, well, for this year, are predicated on current staffing levels and consultants through roughly March 31st, 2025, assuming that these positions would be filled by Q4, which is April, May, June, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. And the FTE says it, because basically I want, I just wanna confirm that the administrative clerk and the community service leader are already budgeted positions, that's nothing we're adding. We're removing the community development director and the assistant planner and adding a senior planner. We're adding a management analyst, not a senior management analyst, as we previously discussed, and then the community, what is the other position? Community something technician?
Community development technician.
Development tech. Thank you.
So, yeah, that's to take care of the code enforcement that we're currently paying for leave to take care of, yeah.
Right, and I wanted to reflect that too, that because our last discussion, a couple of council meetings ago, was $108,000 for a code enforcement person working two days a week through our for-leave consulting company, so that, this person, new position, would replace that consulting. Okay. And then again, our, we have savings of roughly $27,000 this year, and then an additional cost in the next budget, starting in July, of $76,000, and again, all consulting costs are factored into that, so I just kind of wanted to wrap that. Did you have any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be important to reflect, because if, if I understand correctly, that, I think that's 75, that's why I wanted to see all the positions laid out, including like the ones that we have for contract roles, because even, so what we're projecting for FY '26 is an annualized increasing cost of 76, but I don't think that includes the for-leave cost. It doesn't, I mean, I, I'm not quite sure, so I'm hoping that if we get that laid out in the presentation, it'll reflect that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. The 76 is for fiscal year '25, '26, which we won't have any for-leave costs.
Okay. So, but I mean, if you're doing it apples to apples, you would include that as your baseline, because that's what we're currently doing versus what this is going to. So I would just, I would say like in the presentation for full council, I think it'd be helpful to have the whole thing. You could lay out like staff, FTEs, contractors.
Yeah.
Before, after, and I think that'll illustrate.
A clearer picture.
Yeah, what's actually happening.
Sure.
The only, when we were talking about who's doing what in terms of the event support, I just know that, I want to shout out for Stephanie, who essentially was doing like two or three jobs all at once last year and was very helpful in that support, so as long as some of these roles are helping to lift that burden from Stephanie, that's really a key goal. And then the, you know, in terms of positions, just to clarify, so on the org chart, it reflects 27.6 FTEs. All people are full-time, 100%, except for the community services leader, which is at three days per week, .6.
Yes, basically.
Hourly .6.
Yeah, that, that's what we're budgeting at, and it'll probably come in lower, because those positions will work when needed.
Yeah.
So there may be a week that they don't work, because we don't have a rental or we don't have an event, so, yeah.
And then, so currently, you know, for years, you could look at in our act for, you could see the FTE, approved FTEs, and I think for a number of years, it was at 24, and then I think for the past several years, it was at 26.6. So this reflects, with all the puts and takes, this reflects an increase of one FTE, and I think in terms of total headcount, it's plus one, but in terms of dollars, it's a little bit less because of the adjustments. That's how I'm understanding it. Okay.
Thank you. And the very last question I had too was just, so the community development technician is reporting to you, Regina, correct? But they'll be working with the senior planner on certain things, assisting as needed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify a little bit, that position will help the front counter with over-the-counter requests from community development, and then the senior planner can also assist with land use information to that code enforcement officer when questions come up about certain situations on property.
Okay, terrific. And I think the only other point that I wanted to make before I opened it up for public comment was the management analyst. I'm not sure if I saw that that person was also backing up our accountant. I think it had backing our assistant. I think it had backing our assistant city manager and maybe something else. I don't know if it was counter worker, city clerk, I can't remember, but I know that was important for payroll, correct?
Yes, it was, that management analyst would be backing up all three positions.
Okay, okay.
For extended vacations, sick time, those types of things. Yeah, special projects.
Great. Well, I really appreciate the holistic approach. That's what we were hoping to achieve today so that we bring it back to the city council on January 21st in a full package. Anything else, Vice Mayor Wong? Okay. At this time then, I'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? No? Okay. And then I'll bring it back. I'll close public comment, there's my gavel. Anything? A playbook from Jim Diaz.
I would, I would just say I would look to the prior occupant of the role and kind of peg it at that rate. I think if I recall correctly, it was in the, like, in the 60 range. So take a look and I think that, that makes the picture a little bit better because if you do the 25% benefit load, it's a little easier, so.
Okay. And then do you need an action item from us?
We just need the recommendation.
Okay. So I think we recommend that these positions approved as presented with just the modification to the salary for the community development technician.
Yeah. And I would add, if you, you really do want to skinny down the job descriptions, it'll make your life a lot easier. Less is more. And I would probably say like, in its current state, I'd probably target like 20%. Like do a pretty stiff haircut on that. You will get the exact same thing, but it'll be easier for you. Easier to maintain, easier to manage.
And then also, at the next council meeting, we'll have an entire overview of current staffing salaries and proposed salaries.
Of which I will be absent, so I will, I will view it from afar.
Great. Not great that you won't be there, but thank you. Okay.
I know how to.
All right, then with that, I'm going to close that item and move on to, let me get back to my agenda here. And the next item, do we want to go, are we prepared to go back to UBS?
Yes, Mr. Dill is on the line still and available for his presentation.
Okay. So we'll go back to agenda item number four. And will we see Mr. Dill?
Cross your fingers.
James, are you out? There he is. There he is.
Welcome again, Mr. Dill.
Can he hear us?
James, can you hear us?
I heard something there. If someone was...
We can hear you.
I don't have any audio if anybody's speaking.
Uh-oh.
One moment.
Okay, so we're ready to go.
It's not me, I'm not in the meeting. I'm not. I'm not in the meeting, oh. Stephanie.
James, can you hear us now?
Yes.
I'm getting some audio, but there's a lot of feedback, or a lot of echo.
You can go ahead, it's going to give feedback right now. But we hear you clearly.
Okay. Do you want me to share my screen?
Yes, please.
So I'm just going to get started here. Good to, good to see you all again. We are going to kind of just walk through the presentation here and then I'll, I'll just kind of pause and give some time for questions. We had talked about setting up an advisory relationship for the city utilizing UBS's investment advisory program. So some of this we discussed in prior meetings. UBS offers a comprehensive advisory solution for all sorts of institutional and individual clients. You'd be hiring UBS as a fiduciary to be offering unbiased advice. It would also include reporting capabilities, monthly reviews. We provide access to a variety of different portfolio programs and portfolio managers, as well as different strategies, that'll be the best fit for the city's portfolio. Ultimately, it's a collaborative approach. Clients have the ability to customize the structures of the portfolios. So you really kind of help guide the direction for this and then we help find the best solution that would be the best fit for, for what you're trying to accomplish. We're going to take a look at two specific solutions and then we can talk a little bit more. One solution would be utilizing a short-duration treasury portfolio. This would consist 100% of US Treasury securities. The average duration is about a year. The maximum portfolio or the maximum maturity for any of the investments in the portfolio would be three years. So this is a short-duration portfolio. Right now, it's yielding about 428. And the benchmark would be a one-year treasury. Would be kind of the benchmark that this portfolio uses. It's all US Treasury securities and you could see a little bit more of the information on this strategy. This is run by UBS's portfolio management team. So this would be one solution that we can consider for the portfolio. We can provide a mix of solutions, right? So maybe not one solution is going to be perfect for the entire portfolio. We could do a mix of these different solutions, but this would be a solution that could be the entire portfolio or a portion of the portfolio. Another solution that we're going to talk about would be an investment-grade government and credit short-term portfolio. So this portfolio would be a little bit longer in terms of duration. Average duration is about two and a half years. The maximum maturity is about seven years. So this is a bit of a longer portfolio. And then the difference with this portfolio would be that the portfolio manager is not just going to invest in treasuries, they could also look at, they could also look at agencies. They could look at corporate bonds, they could look at municipals, they could look at TIPS, they could look at government mortgage-backed securities. So broader range of investment options available in this portfolio, obviously because of the variety of bonds and the types of bonds in the portfolio, you're going to receive a larger yield. And again, this is a bit of a longer portfolio than the short-duration treasury, about two and a half year in terms of duration. You could see a little bit more. This portfolio is run by Invesco. So there are two solutions that we wanted to highlight. The decision could be to go exclusively with one of the portfolios. It could also be a mix of both of the portfolios. And when we talk about transitioning the current portfolio to one of the advisory solutions, the current size of the portfolio is a little bit more than $12 million. So if you did a full transition based on the current portfolio, there would be some losses that would be realized in moving the current holdings to what would be the new holdings. Some of the positions are currently underwater or trading at less than what they were purchased at. Part of that's just in the environment of interest rates. When interest rates were lower, purchase, investments were made and then interest rates go up, the price of those investments then corresponds, goes lower. So if there was a full transition, there'd be about $126,000 of kind of realized losses. But within 12 months, the additional income from kind of getting out of the lower-yielding securities into some now higher-yielding securities would be made up for within, within about, with less than eight, 12, less than 12 months. The other option would be just a partial transition to start with a portion of the portfolio where we wouldn't accrue any, any losses or at least break even and then just allow some of the investments that are currently trading underwater, just allow them to mature. And then once they mature at their par value, the port, the cash could be transitioned to one of the new advisory solutions. So those are just two of the considerations to think about in terms of transitioning the current portfolio to one of these advisory solutions. From some of our prior conversations, there were some questions about the value of getting kind of institutional execution. One of the values of having a portfolio manager is that they're able to make investment purchases at much larger amounts at institutional pricing. So I mean, the analogy would almost be to think about, you know, Costco. When you're being, when you buy in bulk, you're going to get better pricing. There's really no way to know exactly what that would be, but using some estimates, if we looked at prior year purchases, being able to get institutional pricing versus what would be now kind of considered retail pricing, you can see that based on the purchases on the annual basis, you know, the difference in execution could be anywhere from $7,000 to potentially upwards of $28,000. This is what you would assume to be in terms of getting better institutional level pricing because large portfolio managers are able to make purchases in the million-dollar, $5 million, $25 million, $50 million range and then pass along those securities to the investors within the portfolio. So when you buy at those levels, you're going to get much better execution, much better pricing. So by using a portfolio manager, you're able to take advantage of that institutional pricing. Another significant advantage is just cash not sitting idle. The portfolio manager is going to continue, sorry. The portfolio manager is going to continue to keep the money working for you. This is just kind of a look back at a few prior years. This was days of idle cash or money just that was kind of a maturity that came into the portfolio that maybe sat there for a certain period of time based on us getting feedback from the city. So you can see that in 2002, there was about 36 days of idle cash. 2023, about 43 days of idle cash. And 2024, again, about 36 days of idle cash. So that's the advantage with having daily active portfolio management that the cash is not going to sit idle. This advisory solution, whichever solution that you decide to go with, whether it's the treasury portfolio or the government and credit portfolio, is 30 basis points annually, so point 30. That's billed quarterly and then calculated on a daily average balance. So the quarterly is going to look forward and then as a quarter passes, we look back and if the daily average balance was a little more or a little less, we make it even based on what the daily average balance was for that quarter. So the annual cost is 30 basis points or point 30. It's billed quarterly and then calculated on a daily average balance of the portfolio. And then just some next steps that we had talked about. It's going to the council. Obviously, we'd have to do a little bit of updating to the investment policy based on the strategies that we decide to go with. We would set the portfolio allocation and the guidelines and then we would monitor the progress accordingly. We would do about a monthly call with the finance team. We would do about a semi-annual review with this budget committee and then an annual review with the city council. So it's a lot to walk through. I'm happy to go back and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, James. Vice Mayor Wong, do you have any questions? I've...
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I think it hits the nail on the head.
Sorry, I don't have any audio if anybody's asking any questions.
Can you see the video? Can he hear us from your machine?
Hey, Stephanie, is, I still don't have any audio if anybody's got any questions.
Maybe we can, maybe we can type to him. I don't know.
I know he can't hear us though.
He can't hear us, let him.
I would let him know, if you can, that the ability to do dialogue is going to be challenged here and...
Sorry, Stephanie.
I do have a couple of questions. We do have someone trying to fix it at the moment.
Hey, I don't know, Regina or Stephanie, sorry. There's still no audio, so.
No audio?
I don't know if there's a way to let me know what you want to do here.
Sure, just a moment, we're trying to fix the audio.
Is there a way to send him a message to let him know we're working on it? Okay. We could go to public comment.
Yeah, let's go to public comment.
Yeah, let's go to public comment and then we can come back to our questions for James. Does anyone have any public comment on this agenda item?
I may as well speak.
Thank you.
That's a good presentation by James, but he left out a lot. And it's stuff that he should, about him. First of all, his record is totally clean on FINRA. I don't know if anybody checked that.
Recording in progress.
The group that he's with at UBS is, this is what they specialize in. So this, what they are offering is good. Full disclaimer, I'm speaking as a citizen, not as what I do for a living. When he mentioned the institutional execution, that's a big deal, particularly in fixed income. If you guys had any idea how those things really traded and how much room there is to make commissions? And that's the difference between what this is versus what we had. This is all institutional. The driver to do business is not commissions. When you work with someone at a brokerage firm in a standard brokerage account, the duty is suitability. Is the investment suitable for you? A US Treasury might be suitable and a government agency might be suitable. But the one I'm going to sell you is the one that pays me the most commission. That's just, unfortunately, that's the driver. In this relationship, fiduciary and under the Act of 1940 that he mentioned, it's, he, they have to do what's in your best interest. So the whole commission argument goes away. In fact, they're not allowed to make commissions. I operate the same way. So this is an improvement for the city. It takes the burden off of Chris and off of Regina. They don't want to be responsible for managing the city's money, so you hire someone like UBS to do this. And then really, it only comes down to, you know, how you're going to parcel out the money. That's for you guys to figure out. But James did a good job here, so hopefully you guys come to a good conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gavidia. Anyone else? Public comment? James, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear now, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I just, Happy New Year. Just a couple, couple of quick questions. So are you looking for guidance from us today? Or is the staff looking for guidance for us today to decide exactly are we going with option one, option two, or a combination of both? That's my first question.
Staff is looking for a recommendation from the budget
Staff is looking for a recommendation from the Budget and Audit Committee for what the Budget and Audit Committee feels is most acceptable. If you would like us to take both option A and option B to the full council and have the council make that recommendation, that is appropriate. If the Budget and Audit Committee is comfortable making a recommendation for one or the other, we can move that forward to council.
Okay. Thank you. And James, my only other question was, I think we were at, I know you call it bips, 20 bips, last time our committee met. And can you just explain why we're at 30 now? Is there a reason for that difference? And what do you estimate our costs for managing, you managing the portfolio will be?
Well, the cost, the cost is just going to be based on the size of the portfolio. So if you assume that the portfolio is $12 million, it's, it's point three, it's 30 basis points times $12 million would be the annual, would be the annual cost. So, I mean, again, this is just kind of back of the napkin math, but that would, that would be about $36,000.
Okay.
Right? If it's 30 basis points on $12 million.
And we were at 20. Can you explain the difference between, we, we were talking about 20, the difference between 20 and 30, why it's, the basis points are higher now?
Part of it is, once we kind of went through, you know, the RFP process and then kind of discussions with the team and kind of determining that using some different portfolio managers as different options available, that's going to require the 30 basis points in cost is utilizing outside portfolio managers where we can go to a variety of different managers opposed to managing it essentially, you know, in-house via, you know, James Dillon team. We're able to bring in a variety of different portfolio managers where we're also doing the due diligence on the portfolio managers, making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And then ultimately, if there's a better solution available for you guys within this program that UBS had, which is called access, we provide access to a variety of portfolio managers. If there is, let's say, a better portfolio manager out there, we can make that change. Now, we wouldn't make that change without you guys, but if, let's just say, for example, you decided to go with portfolio manager one and after a year, maybe two years or three years, they're not kind of living up to their benchmark or they're not achieving what we would kind of assume to be adequate returns or performing well, we could actually go to another portfolio manager who's performing better.
Okay. Well, thank you for explaining that and I had a feeling it had something to do with the RFP process, but I wanted to make sure I understood that. Vice Mayor Wong, what are you thinking in terms of recommendation?
I, I could be persuaded, but I think for now, given the current market and where we're at, I would recommend the first, the first solution, the UBS short duration with a full conversion as well.
So taking some losses now for gains, eventual gains before the end of the year is even out?
Yeah, because of the current yields, I think the gains will outweigh the losses very quickly and because if we focus on the short duration treasuries, it'll pretty much be a slam dunk for getting that. So to me, that's the, probably the most conservative. If, you know, if the council collectively wants to split into the Invesco option, I think that's totally viable as well. But we'd have to look at the durations because I think we, our investment policy wouldn't support a seven-year duration in terms of liquidity having a primary goal. So, so I think the easiest, or the most expeditious thing to get James and, and team working for us would be to go with the short duration strategy. We don't have to change our investment policy at all for that. And then also do the full conversion and then we can continually have discussion. If the market moves significantly and the treasuries no longer make sense, then we can update it and then, and then adjust.
I would agree. And that's the full transition with some short-term losses, but longer-term gains.
Do we mark to market the, the undermarket investments in our act for? Like, do we reckon, or is that going to show realized losses or do we already recognize the losses now because they're underperforming?
No, we would have recognized.
Okay. Either way.
I don't, I don't think, yeah, I think that the, at least I know for the portfolio side of it, most of the investments are kind of booked at current market value, right? So you're saying, you know, that the 12.1 million dollar value of the portfolio is current market value. So to your point, it's kind of mark to market in that sense.
Yeah, I think from a book basis, that's, the question is more not on the portfolio side, but on the book side, whether or not it gets recognized. And either way, it's not really a, a cash move, so I think that's fine.
And we still have access to other reserves in case of emergency? This doesn't put us in any kind of.
That is correct. We still have our camp and our life funds.
Camp and life, yes. That would be my recommendation.
I concur.
Okay. Do you need a motion or, okay, that was our action item.
James, when I was talking, when you couldn't hear us, so I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. It hit the mark exactly what we were asking, so thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
So this will be going not to the next council meeting on January 21st, but on the following council meeting in, the first council meeting in February.
February 4th. Okay.
And we can excuse Mr. Dill?
Yes, Mr. Dill is excused. He can go back and enjoy his family. Thank you, James.
Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Thank you. Okay, our final agenda item, and I know that Vice Mayor Wong is running.
I can push to 5:10.
Okay. We only have about 12 minutes to get through this next item, which may be kind of tough. This is item number six, which is our spending authority for the library refresh project. Regina, do you want to kick us off on this one? And Stephanie, either or, or both?
Certainly, I'll go ahead and kick it off. So what staff, we are looking for direction on the library refresh to select what items we move forward with first and also to set aside a budget so we're able to work with our partners as well. In the packet, I did include phase one and phase one was stripped of all items with the exception of carpeting and painting and it's only for the library space. It does not include Hoyer Hall. With that, we did, in the memo, we're using what phase one had estimated, that was from the county's architect, estimating about $148, $200 towards carpeting, about $54,000 towards painting and construction costs, which our staff is estimating is going to be less because there are some requirements that the county needs to maintain a contingency. We may not need to do so with our construction costs, so they are coming in at about 114 if those are included, but they may be less when we actually get the items. From some initial quotes that we did receive, the library space for carpeting only is about $90,000. And it does not include, as noted in the staff report, removal of library materials or furniture or storage for those items. We are still pending the additional two quotes for painting and carpeting as well.
Thank you. I think I'm going to couch my questions. I'm going to try to be as, because I asked a lot and I did get some terrific answers from staff just before this meeting. So it's my understanding that the city itself is leading this project in conjunction with the county and the foundation?
Correct. So the city as the building owner would be the lead and the county brought a proposal to us if we were going to be considering any updates and recommendations. And the foundation also is interested in hopefully having some of these upgrades made and we're interested in finding ways that they can support.
Okay. So I think my big question is, are we moving forward with the county's design that they've proposed? Because I think my concern is, yes, we want to pay for carpeting and painting and maybe do some lighting and all those things that we've been discussing for some time, but do we need to approve the design first or is the carpeting as is exactly where it's going to be even after new furnishings and shelving and teen area and so on and so forth come in? I would hate for us to estimate our quote on something that drastically changes once the actual design is approved. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. The quote that we did receive is based on the design space. No spaces are changing. They are containing, continuing to keep the carpet throughout unless we decide we want a soft floor or a hard floor, I should say.
Okay. And so the 148 then for the carpeting is the county's estimate of what the carpeting is, but the quote we received was 90,000?
Correct. That was our first quote. We're still pending two more.
Okay. And we did talk, this is not part of the library refresh, but also getting a separate quote for Hoyer Hall, because I'm looking at the carpeting right now, maybe paint and carpeting, because it would make sense if we were going to do that anyway, to use the same contractors to come in and do that. I have more questions, but do you want to jump in real quick? And, okay. And so for, for us, for, from us today, you need us to determine, are we okay with estimates for paint, carpeting and whatever the resilient work refers to? And there was also an opportunity to get a quote for removing some furniture, putting it in storage while this process is going on because the library may be closed for a period of time. So today, I guess where I'm, I'm still fuzzy, are we guestimating what the city costs are going to be or are we going to be able to go back to our city council with some real costs?
We would like to go back to city council with real costs. We're seeking direction from the Budget and Audit Committee as to what to move forward to with. In the phase one, everything was stripped out, so it does not include any furniture, does not include any Hoyer Hall space, it is simply carpet painting and the fees associated with that. So if there are other items that are identified that the committee believes we should recommend in our report.
And because there was a phase one furniture, but then it looks like it's not in phase one, it's 73,000. Is that not part of phase one?
Correct. So we moved it out of phase one just to find out what was the bare minimum to start and then moved that to phase two, where we're hoping we're also able to engage our partners.
Okay. And then my last question and then for the moment, the foundation will be, will not be required to provide any funding for this phase one because it's mostly carpeting, painting, okay, some construction.
And we wanted to be sensitive to the limitations to the funding as well.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Wong?
So in terms of just feedback, I guess, I think when, because essentially we're saying, hey, should the city pay for the maintenance and upgrade of our own building? And I think the answer is yes. So it's just really a question of like, what do we want to do? And so I would recommend that when we come forward to council, there's at least a couple different proposals, like as you have here, the, the baseline is the, you know, paint and carpet and I would include this room as part of it. I don't know if we really need carpet in this room, but in terms of, or another surface that's different, is what I was saying. But you guys can figure out what works best there. And then, you know, in talking with the, with, well, everyone, I, I think it would behoove us to also include, this is the baseline, this is if you want to go one step further, this is if you want to go one step further. And because that will, you know, I think there's a very strong community support for supporting our library, which I, I concur with. And I think that, you know, it, it makes sense for us to evaluate that. There's been several moving parts thus far, so it's, it is challenging to evaluate when it is somewhat of a moving target, but if we are able to work with the folks that are involved and really lay down, this is, here are multiple potential options that we will be happy with any one of them. We will be more happy with some than others. And then if, if that is how it comes to council, I think that'll be easier to evaluate, especially if there's, the critical component is to have a more, a more solid footing on the funding or on the, not the funding, sorry, on the cost. That would, that would be the most helpful. So that, that's what I'd recommend.
So again, just to reiterate, it sounds like the city will be responsible for all of phase one. And is that amount this 316992?
That is based on the county's architect's bid, but it may be different.
So it might be less than that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what we're hoping for.
Okay, terrific. So.
And when we're bidding this project, what we're doing is bidding the library as one and an ad alternate of Hoyer Hall with options so that we look at it separately. So it's a library project and Hoyer Hall project.
Okay, terrific. And then we can more clearly define whether it's the next working group or the next budget audit committee meeting, the scope of phase two, phase three, kind of like we said, what we'd like to have, what we need to have, what, so on and so forth. Does that sound about right? Okay.
Sounds good to me.
So today, and I know I have to open up to public comment, but we're cut, we're looking at that 316992 as the most it will probably cost the city.
I think they're hesitant to say that because we haven't got the estimates yet.
Correct. Yeah.
Even if you do get the additional estimates, we're going to still go with the lowest bid. And so if these two that we're showing today are the lowest bid, that's.
I mean, I'm, I'm remaining open to being persuaded that, well, even though this is the lowest amount, maybe there's something that's fabulous that we want to even, we want to do more. I mean, that, and I think that's really what would be the important next step is to really just, really weigh the options that's more solid and then you can actually get something that's actionable and then we can make a, make a decision, go forward. So that, that to me is, I want to make, push us towards something that's actionable.
Okay.
Sorry, and just for clarity, so phase one, you'd want to just keep everything the city was responsible for. Phase two, we start adding in furniture and then face, or option three, I should say. So baseline carpet paint, if we go one step up, that includes furniture and then the next would be the construction where they were discussing pony walls and other, okay.
And lighting. I think lighting has come up before from our own librarian, so somewhere in here, whether it's phase one or phase two, we should be addressing some of the lighting issues. Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment, then I'll bring it back for additional questions. Does anybody have any public comment? Foundation, no, nothing? Okay. And I also do want to say that a local resident of the city of Clayton owns a commercial furniture company, also approached me, I forwarded the information onto our staff about providing estimates for our furniture. They're part of a consortium and they are a Clayton resident and they'd like to help out. So, and my very last comment is, we're not going to be talking about any fundraising right now or any funding gaps till we get, maybe to the next phase. Correct? Because I know that was another question that came up. Okay. Anything else? Wonderful. All right. And it's 5:09. What's that? We're going to adjourn at 5:09. You've got to be out of here by 5:10. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.